Thank you for being here. We really appreciate you coming out and being willing to listen to our citizens tonight.
Allegedly, that's what we're supposed to be doing, so. The first time business for the county commission would be to adopt the agenda. Are there any modifications? We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Any public discussion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, as opposed, pass along so y'all can do the same.
All right. We have adopted the agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
County?
Second.
Motion on the floor for the agenda, second. All those in favor of the motion please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, keep my saying no. Motion passes for the zero.
Madam Vice Mayor, I believe y'all wanted, y'all had questions about update for County Road 236?
Yes, I actually put that on the agenda. I understand that the County Road 236, which is, has been in very bad shape, and at one time it was number one on the list for the county to repair, and it's been moved off a few times, but under the proposed transportation surtax, it is item number three. Above that is 43rd and 235, and I would like, if it's possible, to understand a little bit as to how that came about, how 43rd and 235 came about as being number one and number two, with Baker 236 being number three on the list.
Well, I will give you what I know to be the case, and Mr. Fay, who formerly was at Public Works, he's since been, I guess promoted, I don't know that that's the right word, to one of the assistant managers. And essentially, what we have is a criteria based upon a number of factors. The, you know, the, the, the status of the road, and the road, the shape of the road, the amount of traffic that goes on the road, things, safety, you know, wrecks, all those sort of things that are basically what they use to determine the hierarchy. But it's my understanding that if, should the, the sales pack, tax pass, and we're not supposed to advocate, but please vote for it, because we desperately need it, the, they're going to work on, you know, anywhere from ten to twelve projects initially. So, because it's number three doesn't mean that there, it's going to not do anything until the other two have been completed. They're going to work on a, you know, a number of different road projects for, you know, to try to get as many done as, as possible.
My other question, and I'll open it up to any other commissioners, what happens if the, if the transportation surtax does not pass, while we do support it, there is that possibility that it wouldn't pass, what happens then on the paving of 236? How is that addressed?
It's, it's going to be difficult to get, you know, the, unless there's a substantial millage rate, which, you know, to the tune of like a whole mill, I don't know that, that, that there's any other revenue source. Because what, just for edification to the public, the sales tax, a sales tax, one penny will generate about thirty million dollars. That will be distributed to, the county will get about thirteen million dollars, between thirteen and fourteen. The City of Gainesville will get about thirteen, fourteen millions, and the rest of it will be dispersed between the rest of the municipalities. And the way we structured it, we tried to, to make it so that it's beneficial to the, to the outlying municipalities, because they actually end up getting more than they would have if we did the straight distribution as, as recommended by the state. So.
The question was, how much does High Springs receive, and it's over nine hundred thousand under that tax?
A year.
A year.
A year. And, so, anyway, what a, a whole mill will generate is somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to eleven million dollars. And those, you know, if we did that, you know, it would, it would be a general fund distribution, so it would most likely be distributed, distributed to everyone. I would, I would think we would have to have that discussion, but it would in no way be the amount of dollars that we were talking about, in which case it would take even longer. And, and honestly, with this sales tax, people don't like to hear this, but we, we did an eight-year time span, and we did it eight years, knowing that in eight years, that would not take care of the whole, the whole backlog. The backlog is somewhere for the county, and I'm not sure what it is for the City of High Springs, but for the county, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about three hundred and eighty million dollars. What the, the county's portion will probably be, let's see, thirteen times eight is around a hundred, a hundred million. So obviously, that's not enough to take care of all the, all the backlog. However, what we're hoping to do, and what we haggled, well, we discussed intensely for, for a number of hours on Tuesday, was how to, how to, to do, how to promote, and not promote, but present this, and what would be in the ordinance, in an effort to try to get as much trust as possible, so that if we do this, and we do this the way that, that we hope to see it happen, that come next time, people, you know, we can say, this is what we're going to do, and people, there won't be the hesitation that we've perceived in the past. So, in a nutshell, that's, if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them. These gentlemen are just as much expert on this as I am, so.
Commissioners, any questions on that?
Well, except that, Mr. Barnas, except that I always seem to remember in the past, we were told 236 was on top of it.
I can answer that a little bit.
The county commission has never, to my knowledge, taken a vote, at least in the last couple of years, to rearrange anything on any list. We have a set of criteria that the public works staff generates out of a computer program. Said, it has, it has so many criteria, spreadsheet goes out, it's about that wide. And then it crunches all the factors that are more or less objective, and comes up with a ranking. So, at no time did the county commission say, well, let's put 236, move it down the list, and move something else up the list. So that's, we decided that that's an argument that could go on forever, given the number of roads we have and the number of interests out there. So instead, what we did was agree that the staff would set up this criteria. We would all agree to the scoring. We even looked at it in detail this year. If, if there's an argument to be made, it would be change our criteria, maybe to deal, put more emphasis on pavement condition, or more emphasis on traffic, or more emphasis on something else. But right now, there's, there's agreement among the five county commissioners, and among the staff, and other experts that have looked at our formulas and said, yeah, this is a good way to rank the projects. We have to come up with some way of doing it. And our list goes on for literally pages and pages. So, I think it's a good system. It's transparent. Anybody can look at it and see how the scores were arrived at, as opposed to, you know, three commissioners deciding late one night that we want to move something around. We, we didn't do it that way at all.
Commissioner Barnes, I appreciate that information. It's just that at a meeting that we had here a year ago, I, I pulled that information up. That's what it was. So, you can understand my, my, I seem to remember that. So, I may be wrong.
I know that, you know, that we had split 236 into two different portions. One, we did it five, six, seven, eight years ago. The portion that was, I guess, east of the interstate, and then we have the part that's west. So, part of 236 got done. This part didn't, and my memory's not very good, anyway. But I, I know that we did, we have, the county commission hasn't gone in-depth about the rankings as far as changing. And we think it's, we've been working with this list for, for the other, the 2012 edition of the sales tax.
Actually, probably since 2004.
Thank you.
Do you want, have we moved it?
Well, no, no. It is true, 236 was part of the bond projects that we approved in 2006. And then we decided, because of the downturn in the economy, not to issue the second series of bonds. And when that happened, of course, 236 just happened to fall off the list. I will tell you that if surtax passes, we probably have ninety percent design plans for County Road 236, which would mean that it would probably be one of the first projects that we'd roll out.
Just clarifying on this criteria stuff. So you're talking another year. What if within this year, the numbers change, or whatever the criteria is, and we drop to fifth?
Well, I can answer that one real quickly, because that was part of the discussion the other day. It, it will take a supermajority vote to change the, the ranking of where the, you know, of the priority list. So, you know, it's going to, the county commission has no intention of monkeying with that list, unless we get federal dollars, or some other infusion of cash, that takes care of a project separate from the sales tax. So, you know, we, that, that list.
So, when do you, Lee, when do, when do you review? When do you review it then, and set?
If the sales tax passed, nine years.
No, no, no. When do you review the road criteria to make your list? If we were number one, at what point was the criteria analyzed, and we dropped to three? And will you analyze it at the same date, and see what happens? Can we go back to number one? I'm just saying, there has to be a date in there, someplace where you analyze it, and then you adjust it, and does it stay there for a year until you reanalyze the data? That's all I'm asking.
The board, the board set the criteria that we used in a very objective analysis in 2010 or 11, somewhere around there. But by the, by the fact that the project list is a part of the ordinance that the board approved on Tuesday night, that project list is not going to change. We're not going to reevaluate it at any time during the eight-year period.
Thank you.
If it ever has, since we adopted it in 2010 or 11, have we gone back, applied the same criteria? Because some of them might change, like the number of trips on the road, number of homes on the road. Have we gone back and run it through the numbers again since the original adoption?
We did run through the numbers again, and the project list that we presented to the board for this initiative.
Did it change?
I don't think it changed substantially, no.
Did 236 change?
No. No, I think 236 was probably always, you know, even though it was a high priority project, so was Northwest 43rd Street, and, you know, the other projects that are on the list.
Because Northwest 43rd was on that same, was one of those, also one of those.
Was within the, the list of projects that we were going to do with the bond proceeds.
Right.
So, let me just, just to this, so we're third now, so we won't go lower than third?
No. No, you won't, you won't, you won't go lower than third. And, and as I stated, because we are so far along in the design stage of that particular project, you're, you're likely to be the first project that we roll out.
Commissioner Gestron?
Thank you. As I recall, in 2010, we were like, told that the next year, January, we're at the top of the list. And I understand it is about funds and so forth, and I just, it's, please remember us with this road, because we're at your mercy. We really do need your help to get it done. I know the road was paved up to the other side of I-75, but all the kids going to school, it's right there. Where it's high traffic for us, and it's really important. We need your help.
I, we, we fully understand. Which kind of goes to the, to, if this is going to pass, we need all the help we can get in each municipality, because quite frankly, the sales tax initiatives have not fared well in the area outside the Gainesville, you know, urban and suburban area. So, if there's anything that y'all can do to help contact, or somehow inform those individuals in High Springs and surrounding workshops, or whatever, I think that that's essential to, to, for, for this, for this to pass. Mr. Fay?
Mr. Chair, one of the things that staff is, actually, we're meeting tomorrow to work on a public education campaign. I suspect that we are going to try to be very dependent upon the municipalities to assist us with that. You know, we tried having community-wide meetings with the last initiative, and had very, very poor turnouts. But if the municipalities will get behind it, help us to organize those types of events, county staff will be available at any time to assist the municipalities, but we certainly are going to need the help of the municipalities.
Yeah, I think if the, if the community can somewhat be assured that, that road will be taken care of. I mean, if you go out here and take a left, you can see that it's, it's getting to a point where it's safety, it's right in front of the.
I was on it the other day.
And they're, they're now taking my road in the back, because it's a lot smoother. But on the other side, I'd like to really thank the county for allowing us to hire your crews to do some of our road. It allowed us to do a lot more, and it's been a very pleasurable event, working with it. So, thank you. Mr. Singleton has been one of those that really has helped.
Yep, he's, he's a good man. We have a lot of good people that work for the county.
You do.
Any further discussion on this? Would the public like to comment? And we'd love to hear what you have to say about the sales tax, about, you know, your opinion of it, and all that kind of good stuff. Where do they, where do, okay, you want to come up front and? And if you'll be kind enough to identify yourself for the record.
I'm Rick Testa. I live at 15622 Northwest 268 Terrace in High Springs. And for about thirteen years, I personally have been involved in trying to get, you know, whatever it takes to get some roads paved out here. And, I mean, I've been through, in thirteen years, three different commissions, total revamp of commissions, different city managers, all that stuff. Recently, they've been paving roads, our city has been, with the help of the county. So, number one, I want you to understand that, that as a citizen and the people in my neighborhood, we really appreciate it. What a difference. I lived on a dirt road, a mile down a dirt road for thirteen years. And when I moved up here and built my house, the, the commission at the time, and the city manager and everything, promised us that that road was going to be paved by the city, but they couldn't do it financially. So it, and I got put off thirteen years. Thirteen years later, we have a paved road now because of you all and the city manager. So, please don't get me wrong. The reason I'm standing up here is because I'm like in awe. I go out there every day, and I bow down to the road. It's like, oh my gosh, you know, a paved road. It's remarkable. You all know what I'm talking about. However, there is one problem. I had a meeting with the city manager and the, and the supervisor of utilities here in High Springs. Chip and seal, which I'm not a big fan of, I'm a big fan of OJAM, or if you can afford it, if, you know, you win the lottery and you can afford to pave it, yeah, right. But OJAM's another process that's relatively inexpensive. It's easier to put down. The problem with chip and seal, you all probably know this. I'm not sure how many people in my city know this, because they haven't used it for a long, you know, it's a new product. It has to be put down properly, or it's worse than if you had left the dirt road. And unfortunately, the very first road that was paved recently with chip and seal in High Springs was the one that I live near. I'm not on it. So, if, if it stays dirt, it doesn't affect me personally. It was put down, and I just had some surgery, so I was stuck in the house for like, two months, you know? And I got to go out every day and watch them, and I was going, step one, they did a great job with step one. Step two, they did a great job with step two, step three, but step four, they dropped the ball. They didn't roll the emotion properly with the rollers, and they didn't use the right kind of bonding rock in a combination with the rollers. So, for the last four days, that the county crew was out there, whoever the individual was, or the individuals were that were responsible for the county crews that last week, they, they went to lunch. So, again, if I knew the person's name, if it's, the name is Susan, or George, I'd say, hey, George, great job, step one through three, but step four, you really dropped the ball. Okay, so, thank you for step one through three, county. City, Commissioner Weller, Barnas, Gestron, Jameson, manager booth, you guys now, the ball's in your court. You need to go down to 160th Terrace, 158th Avenue, and look. Don't just take somebody's word for it. Walk over and look at the road, and you will see, after fourteen days, from the time they pulled the machinery off, it's already starting to degrade. It's degrading right now. It rained the last three days, and there's an erosion problem already, because the last four days, they dropped the ball. So, the only reason I'm saying this, I'm not complaining, but if anybody here is getting a road chip and sealed in the next year, it's up to us, the citizens, to make sure that the crews chip and seal the road properly. Because if they mess up on any one of the four steps that it takes to put chip and seal down properly, it's going to cost you, commissioners, and me, taxpayers, more money in the long run to come back six months later and repair the road. But thanks for what you've done. It's still like winning the lottery compared to the way it was. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Testa.
Any questions, any comments?
Is that something that?
By the way, can I take, I'm sorry, I missed one thing. I missed one thing. If you, anybody here in the room, or any commissioners are interested, the state of Ohio, believe it or not, have a website. It's the most comprehensive website.
Put that chair so you can sit down.
Only have three minutes, I think. But if anybody's interested after the meeting, the Ohio website, which is, you know, WW and fifteen acronyms after it, they break it down to where a third grader could put chip and seal down and do it perfectly. But if the third grader doesn't understand the four processes that we're doing right now in High Springs, and this was the first project, so I'm just here as the, I'm not complaining, I, I see a problem, and I'm offering a solution. Go on the Ohio DOT, the Ohio State DOT website, and find out what it takes to put chip and seal down. If you do it right, it's great. If you do it wrong, it's, it's a problem. Thanks again.
Thank you, Ms. Testa.
Thank you very much, y'all.
You want to come forward and?
I too would like to thank you for what you have done to help us, and using your equipment to help us.
Ms. Addy, you want to tell us your name?
Billy Doughty, High Springs. I just want to, to ask a few questions. I'm not nearly as knowledgeable as Mr. Testa. Thank you, Mr. Testa. That was great information. When we had our road paved up to our house, we had to hire it done and pave it, and pay for it all ourselves. So, I think it's wonderful that we're getting any help from anywhere. But I wanted to ask, you mentioned that when the income from this tax comes, I would ask you to repeat for us how you said it would be divided again, please?
Okay, I, I can't give you all the specifics, but.
Just close.
The county and the City of Gainesville, because of the population similar, is about thirteen million, a little over thirteen million. I think thirteen point four three, or something like that. And then the rest of the, the money, which would be, say, whatever the, the difference between the two of those added together in thirty million dollars. Thank you. The City of High Springs, we get up, up close to a million dollars a year. They're going to get three point three one percent. The City of Elotch will get a little over a million dollars. And then the rest of it is distributed to the, to the, and New Barrio get a little over a million dollars.
All right. Thank you for that information.
Actually, your vice mayor was kind enough to provide that information.
Thank you, Ms. Weller. Now, let me ask this question. Is there any alternative? Let's say that we encourage everybody, and this fails. What does that do, and are there any other alternatives?
Y'all want to have a shot at it?
I'll take a crack at this, because we've been thinking about this for years now.
I bet you have.
Since it failed two years ago, what do we do? Some people don't want to believe it, but the, the scale of this problem is much larger than we can readily solve with the existing taxing capability that we are given by the state. If this does not pass, I personally am not going to try to do it again in two years. I'm going to wait. We tried it twice in two years. It'll give a little bit of time. But if it doesn't pass, we have two options. We can either just let the roads continue to do what they're doing. I guess when they get, enough of them get bad enough, then enough citizens will vote for it. At this point, if it's not passing, it's because not enough people think the problem is serious enough. We could, if, so that's one option, let the roads continue to deteriorate and try again. The other option is, we could try to address it with the property tax mileage that we have available to us. The chair was saying that we're at about nine mills now, we're allowed to go to ten. So, we could just unilaterally substantially improve property taxes in order to try to pave the roads ourselves. But I would be reluctant to do that if the people in the county had just got through telling us we don't think this is a serious enough problem to tax ourselves. So, those are the options that we have, and none of them are pretty.
Thank you. I think it's not that the people maybe do not think it's important enough, because obviously, everybody here is pretty concerned about that. It sort of goes back again to years of having heard we're going to do this and not having it done. And I, I think, for whatever the reasons are, that still is difficult for many people. Well, if we pass this, they've been telling us they're going to do it, we passed something once before, they didn't do it. So I think we're going to have to really work on some trust factors, and, and give people good information. And I'm delighted that you're going to be available to do that. Ms. Weller, I heard you say that we are, we support this. Has the City Commission for High Springs already had a vote on this to support, support it?
We sent the, we, we support it in the fact that we sent the list to be part of the referendum.
All right.
So, as far as the commission going out, first of all, there's not a whole lot that you can do to promote. You're not allowed to necessarily promote, but we can go, hold, we can hold public meetings to let people know about it, to let the citizens know about it. And we can certainly, at that same time, invite either the county commission or their staff to come and be there to, to answer questions on, on this as well. But we, the commission did, at, I think it was the last meeting, actually sent the list through, and there was an interlocal agreement that all the cities have to agree to in order for that to be put on the ballot, so that we would get that money.
All right. So, now, will this then ultimately become a ballot issue this November?
It will be.
Is it already to be?
We have, we approved it to go on to the, to the ballot Tuesday.
All right. So it's a done deal, that it will be on the ballot?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And lastly, I heard you say something to the tune of three hundred and eighty million backlog. It brought my mind, to my mind, the question, what is High Springs backlog? Do we have any idea?
If we were to pave all the roads, our, our last was eleven million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Addy, you brought up a point, if you don't mind, that I would like to expand upon through Mike's explanation. There is a difference between property taxes and the sales tax, in that with property taxes currently about, what, fifty percent of the people pay, or fifty percent of the properties pay a hundred percent of the taxes.
Yes, I understand.
And the advantage of a sales tax is that, number one, it generates more money. But the second thing is that, you know, twenty-five to thirty percent of the money that's generated is by people that aren't, don't live here. So, so, you know, and they do use the roads. I mean, you have all the people that come in from all the outlined areas, and, and when they spend money here and have sales tax, then, you know, it helps, it helps alleviate some of the burden from the people that do live here. So, there is an advantage, an inherent advantage, as far as that's concerned. And we also hear, you know, that, that, what's the word, about the disparity? That there's a, with the income disparity, as far as, that, that it's a regressive tax. I think that there, at two, that argument, I would, it's my opinion, that some of that is mitigated by the fact that there are many exemptions that go along with the sales tax, that, you know, food, medicine, things like that, that, where it isn't taxed. And it's, it's on more the, it's not the necessary items so much as some of the other items.
More luxury.
Yes, maybe. But, but, you know, and from that, from that perspective, it, it doesn't have as much of a, it's not as deleterious to the, to the, those individuals that, that don't have as much money. So, there are certain safeguards that are built in, built into a sales tax.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all of you for your information.
Please.
And by the way, there, there's never been a tax referendum of any kind for roads approved in Elotch County. We've never had one before.
Ms. Addy, we're trying to do everything we can to, to. Ms. Addy, we're trying to do everything we can to ensure that, that what we put out there gets done. And the municipalities are supplying their list, all that's going to be available, so that people can see what, you know, what we're trying to do. So, we're, you know, trying to be as transparent and get that information out there as much as possible. Good evening.
How are you? Okay. Wendell Lynn Hayes, 21349 Northwest 205 Street. No, I'm not in the city. I own property in the city of High Springs. Not in the county. I have property in Gainesville, Newberry, also. Besides other properties in Florida.
Well, it sounds like we just have a land baron in front of us.
No, I'm not. That's not, that's not the point. I pay a lot of taxes. Like I say, different areas, different cities in the state of Florida. And I do, first of all, let me just ask, just in reference to 236, I need to speak. But after that, when you open up the other discussion, I need to speak, or do I do it all at one time? I don't know your rules.
Go ahead, go ahead, let us...
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
You've got five minutes.
First of all, 236 is a disaster.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? I am afraid to drive on that road at night. The trucks that come down that road, they're flying. Okay? If they hit a wrong bump, or another individual hit a bump with one of those trucks, there's going to be a fatality. That road is appalling. It should be done now, before someone gets killed. Okay? The potholes that are on the side of that road, not just here at the city limits, especially us, that I, well, say like this, heard from the other meeting, the county people out in the country are not as important, so our road is definitely not as important. Okay? They say, according to what I heard, we're not paying as much taxes. But on the average, I'm paying five times as much as the average citizen, because of all the different properties. I own cars. I tried to do business. I'm paying taxes on that. I'm a landlord. I had to pay taxes on that. So, I'm paying a lot of taxes. I asked one person and they tell me, well, the roads are only done for gas tax. I say, well, can I see the information? No way, no how. That was public works. Okay? They won't disclose the information or they give you a runaround. Okay? Now, even when I get ready to turn in on my road, when I'm going home, that's on 202, if anyone has ever been out that far. Okay? That's where Mr. Cook just passed, is at that corner. Okay? The road is deteriorating there also. Okay? No one is doing anything. They come down and they're putting a little dirt in potholes. Dirt and sand doesn't work. When I was in New York, if you did that, that would end up being beach erosion, because you wouldn't have anything left. And that's what's happening on these roads. Okay? When you go up toward what I call the tourist area, when you get to I-75, the road improves a little, because, maybe because there's not enough people actually traveling on it once you get past the exit. Someone needs to tax maybe the trucking companies, get some extra money from them. Because all of those pine trees, that is a lot of weight. On the average, it's a minimum of 20,000 to 50,000 pounds. The Lime Rock Company, those trucks are very heavy. They're deteriorating the road. No one's saying anything, make them pay a little extra. Instead of telling all the citizens, well, we're going to tax you a little more. If you're going to tax us, give us something for our money. We deserve that. Okay? Now, my other, my other thought, my road. I've been fighting for this road. I've been asking before we even voted on the road. That road is 205. Okay? That road is a safety hazard. When I first moved here, I called and reported the tree, the woman at Public Works got hospital with me. Why are you calling? What's your name? Trying to intimidate me. I said, well, if you don't come pick up the road, pick up the tree, the bus is going to run into it. The buses was using my driveway as a turnaround. Tell them I've had enough in the city, and that's High Springs, too. If they do not care enough about the buses, you're not going to use my driveway as a turnaround. I fenced it off and I still gave them room, but they still backed up in it. And I told them, I went out the window and told them, it's enough. Enough is enough. Okay? It's only a narrow road. It's only one way. I'm guaranteeing you, someone's going to get killed out there, because they, just today, they came out with a little sand, put it on the road. These are old pictures. They came out...
You want to bring, you want to bring your comments to a close?
I will.
Okay.
But I just want you to look at these. They came out, they put a little sand today. Okay? Now, when it rains, it's a mud pile. It runs off into my property, all of it. And then they spin out. This is what people are doing.
Okay.
Okay? Someone needs to find money. I've called Washington.
And I've, and...
One moment and I'll be finished. One moment.
Well, what I give to you, I have to give to everybody.
Just one, one second. I've called Washington and Washington says that the money is there.
Washington isn't here, so I don't...
The money is there.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to tell you that they don't know what they're talking about.
Okay.
Okay? Wait a minute, the check's in the mail.
I'll get the name again.
Okay.
Peter, how are you this evening?
Fine. Tom DiPeter, High Springs resident, frequent traveler of County Road 236. I was on the High Springs City Commission from 2004 through 2007. So, assuming we had these joint meetings in the middle of the year, I assume I attended in 2005, 2006, and 2007. I'm positive that this issue of paving of County Road 236 was on those agendas.
It was.
And not only was it on the agenda, when former county commissioner Rodney Long was the chair, it came up. And the answer was, it's done, it will start next spring. It wasn't like maybe, it was promised that that road would be paved in 2006. And now we're eight years later and we don't even have a funding source for it yet. It was supposed to be bonds issued and, again, every year, 236 is on the agenda of the joint city-county meeting, and we still don't have any progress towards getting it paved. So, I was going to try and go back and actually find the recordings from those meetings. I mean, they weren't like maybes. It will be done next spring. Then we had the meeting the next year, oh, it'll be done this fall. Now, we're still waiting to even start anything on it. It's no longer a maintenance issue, as the previous speaker said, it's becoming a safety issue. There may be an accident out there, somebody's going to get harmed or killed, and somebody is going to want accountability for why we never did anything for the past 10 years on a road that we knew was getting to the point of not being safe anymore. So, I do encourage you, and the question becomes, if the tax referendum doesn't pass, does the county not believe it's your responsibility to make that road safe? You've got to do something. You have to do a bond or you have to come up with revenue somewhere. You've got to fix the road that you've known is hazardous for 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peter. Anyone else? Okay, all right. The next subject is available financial assistance.
Again, that was mine, and really, what I was curious to find out is, does the county have really more financial assistance than we have grants or things that the city, municipality, may need assistance on? For instance, if we have a sewer line that's running up 441, but we have a business that maybe wanting to develop on the other side of 441, and we would need to run the line over onto the other side of 441, and maybe other things. I just don't know that we are aware if there is any, anything that the county has in the way of assistance from municipalities.
Anybody want to have a shot at that?
Short answer is no, we don't at this time. It's come up over the years. Some of the cities have... Cities have, different cities have made different requests for assistance, because, as you, I'm sure you know, all the small cities have, well, and the large ones too, have infrastructure problems of one kind or another. Some places, there's water, some places, sewer, some places, roads. So, we get requests like that and we don't, we don't have any kind of dedicated funding source to help cities. We've never done that. We've talked about it in response to individual requests, and what I, decision I've always taken is that if we're going to do something like that, it needs to be kind of open to all requests. And we need to decide how much money we want to spend this year, have a kind of a competitive process where all the cities say, this is our problem that we want you to fix, and to try to allocate the money fairly, spending the way that's going to have the most benefit or the dollars spent. So, the answer is no to your question, but just at our meeting that we had this week, this kind of meeting that we have with the city of Archer, there was another request for assistance with their sewer facility that they're trying to build. And same kind of answer, you know, year after year after year, we always give this, we don't really do this, but if we do, this is how it's going to happen. That's pretty much where we stand. I don't see us having a significant amount of money, if any at all, available in our budget for at least the next couple of years, given as you are, we're all really, really struggling with our budget right now, to try to come up with a new funding source for a new kind of program. Infrastructure, as you know, is expensive. It's not a small thing.
Ms. Chestnut?
There are some USDA grants, rural opportunity grants, and rural business development grants, and they are actually fairly helpful. I know that Waldo got a seven-figure grant from that source. So, they typically are given to infrastructure projects when there is business opportunity at the end of the spending year. So, you need to be sure that your USDA representative knows of your needs and they can try to match you up with those grants. The region, the office, I think for the state, or at least this region, is in Gainesville, but actually, the office that you start with is down in Ocala.
My understanding is that we now, because we are now lumped in basically with Gainesville, that we are now at a different threshold, and so therefore, you know, the, well, if there are grants available, it's a very small amount, so matching type thing.
Right. One thing we do, and they will honor, is that if there is a business coming in and there is some infrastructure that needs to get to that business, they will provide that kind of grant. But the asking for money, we were at a 45% threshold. We are now at a 15% threshold. So, basically, that, we are out of that.
And what we did, what Waldo, not Waldo, Archer, what Archer said was, we recommended that they talk to our lobbyists in Washington, and apparently, they were very helpful in connecting them with the right people and they had very fruitful discussions with them. And I think actually led to some potential, like a million dollars.
And we actually have a meeting next week represented here. The one thing that we need help, doesn't have to do with money, has to do with, we've just gotten into the economic development arena after taking hiatus for many, many years. So, we need help in that arena, advertising ourselves and putting ourselves out there as rural business. We have a lot of land between here and 75, and we also, we have the utilities that go that way. So, we are trouble-ready and want to participate.
Have you talked with the city of Gainesville? Because it's a Gainesville area chamber.
Yeah, we're part of that, too. We need all the help we can get.
And you're welcome to call the county office and speak to Edgar Camp of Palafox, because I know that we've been pretty successful with one of the state grants. Would y'all like to engage in this conversation?
Are we still on the general, please?
Right now, we're still on number two to see if there's anybody from the public who would like.
Commissioners, I want to, I want to thank you for the work that you all have done with keeping Post Springs in great shape. You've kept it open for you and the public. And I go out there quite regularly and see what's going on, and your staff has done a fantastic job keeping it in good shape out there. I've, I've done over the years, I've done Memorial Day and Veterans Day events in High Springs. Well, this year, I've rented the lodge at Post Springs for 4th of July. So, it's going to be a picnic day, picnic day for the public to come out to Post Springs, use the lodge, use the county facility, come out there, it's free. I'll have a grill out there, you bring your food, you can use the grill, and from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and then you can go to the city of Latua and watch the fireworks, because they start at 3:00 PM. But that, the staff out there, I will not, I cannot say enough of how great that place looks. So, thank you.
You're welcome. General, any further general commission comments? Commissioner Chestnut?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to let everyone know that we do have congressmen, we do have a US senator, and we do have the House of Representatives in the state of Florida in the Senate. I served in the legislature. We didn't get that many complaints or anything. It's sort of like, we were sort of isolated, that the citizens didn't know that we really exist. But really, when it comes to funding, those are the areas that I think citizens should really, really hone in on and make sure that our legislators, our congressmen, and our senators are actually working for us and making sure that they get those dollars to come back to our community. In the legislature... I was reading the paper, and I'm sure you all read the paper. Tons of money. One thing that when I was there, they did was that they increased the registration tags. The big trucking companies didn't like that, because it cost them more money. But that was revenue to the state that they could do things with. So, they did it this year in the legislature, and they gave it to economic development. But those are things that those fundings could have been used for other things. And I'm just saying that you can hold us accountable, but also make sure you hold them accountable, because they get the money, especially with the federal transportation dollars and stuff like that. It comes to the state, and then it goes to the Department of Transportation. So, I'm just saying that put your legislators on the hook and ask them, are they working for us or not? Because it's very, very important that they also be a part of this and know what's actually going on in their districts. And those are my comments. And when they have those delegation hearings for the legislature, I don't know if they do it in February or January. It's important that you participate in those meetings to let them know that this is serious, these are issues, and that the counties and the cities need help. And to do things that will help counties and cities, instead of doing things that hurt us, giving us unfunded mandates that we can't afford and the taxpayer can't afford. It's been stated earlier that we can't raise it to 10 mils. If we raise it to 10 mils, there is no money after the 10 mils. We can't raise it anymore. So, we'd have to live within whatever the Avram Room will collect with those 10 mils. So, all I'm saying is, is just please, tell your congressman and your state representative and senators that we need help and hold them accountable. Thank you.
And Commissioner Chestnut, thank you. Very salient point that I did not make earlier. The county hasn't necessarily... The county hasn't necessarily put as much money into the roads as they, as they should have over the years, there is no question. We have, we maintain 600, about 670 miles of paved roads. Back in the late 80s, the state, as Commissioner Chestnut was alluding to, was kind enough to present the counties with 200 miles of formerly state roads, and they gave it to the counties to maintain. From what I understand, they did pave them before they gave it to us. And then they gave us one penny of gas tax, which generates approximately about a million dollars a year to maintain those 200, 200 miles of roads. Now, what that means is, you know, when you're maintaining a road, you have to maintain the right of way, you have to mow it, you have to do all those sort of things, pave it, I mean, stripe it, you know, those, those sort of things. That does not, that's just for everyday stuff. And then with that same million dollars, you're supposed to repave it as well. And so it was not nearly enough, and that contributed to part of the problem that we're in now. I'm not saying that the county is without blame, but we did have assistance getting there. So any further comments?
Your manager chief has a question.
Yes, sir.
Fire chief Bruce Gillingham, city of High Springs. My question is, it's actually small business we talked about last year, what's going to be the possibility of seeing the rescue unit coming up this way? We've seen the numbers go up even more than what we've seen last year. We've seen transport times of getting here decrease. Units are being held up at the hospital for 15, 20, 30 minutes, hours at a time. They're holding patients on walls. We're just, we're not getting the transports like, like we were. And it seems to be getting increasingly worse.
Well, last year, if memory serves correctly, we did put an extra rescue unit on just four transport.
Right, but that was the critical care transport, which was, if I'm not mistaken, was only partially funded this year and just went on the road not too terribly long ago. But we haven't done anything along the lines as additional emergency transports on the road.
But what that essentially does, did, hopefully.
It has not.
Okay. Should have freed up a little bit of time.
I mean, well, I can tell you, the run numbers are going up between us and Latre. They're booming. We're seeing numbers that we haven't seen in the past. And it's getting worse. I mean, when we're not seeing the rescue unit that's sitting down the road, maybe about once a shift, and we're seeing nine coming from Station 8 in Gainesville, we're seeing Rescue 25 coming up from Hawthorne on a regular basis, we're seeing 15 come over from Archer Road. Those are our standard transports at this time that we're seeing. We're getting Rescue 3 from Waldo Road at GFR Station 3 right now. We're only seeing that rescue unit. A good day, we're seeing them twice.
Okay.
And we're having to move, they're having to move units up from the outline areas to help cover the Gainesville area. Well, what they're doing then is if the rescue unit down the road just happens to be home, they're moving them all the way to Hague. So this is, this is becoming increasingly worse, and I just wanted to make you aware that I know Fire Rescue is more than likely, told you the same scenario that I've just passed on to you. So my million-dollar question is, is we're beyond the point of looking at going ALS? I mean, that's only going to be a very small Band-Aid for us at this point in time. Do I need to look at exploring other options as far as contracting with an additional ambulance service to be able to provide service to the citizens here in High Springs to help take some of the burden off of Latre County at this point in time?
Commissioner Bylin.
Maybe I'm the only one, but I'd be lying if I said I followed all of that. So maybe if you could summarize what you're telling us in writing, maybe communicate it to the chair or to our manager, to our staff, so that we get a response from our emergency staff. None of them are here tonight, or, and maybe shed a little bit more light on the subject. I don't want to just let it end now because none of us really knows what you're talking about, so maybe if you could, we can get it to the right staff, we can get a professional answer.
Right, I can tell you, we've had, I've had multiple meetings with Fire Rescue. Our numbers are relatively matching. We're seeing this unit less than, I don't remember exactly what the numbers were, but I would guess we're probably seeing them less than 38% of the time at this point in time, just for us. That unit's covering three zones. I mean, it's covering us, Latre, La Crosse.
And I'm telling you, I don't know if that's good or bad, or what you're comparing it to, so I really don't, you know, okay, I hear you, but I need some analysis from our staff to let us know what it means.
So Chief Gillingham, if you'll be kind enough to, you can send us, you know, the manager can send us a letter to Ms. Baker, who is going to be out for a little while, but Mr. Fay is filming on the interim basis, you know, we'll be happy to ask for an explanation. Because the time really to address that is during the, during the budget, during the budget cycle. And truthfully, you know, you know what's happened with the budget.
Right.
You know, I do believe that this year will be a little better, you know, but whether it's to the point, because, you know, over the past six years, we've cut, 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 and the rescue unit, going forward, hopefully, we're, we're on the mend that to consider. So, but if you'll send us a letter, time is coming.
Okay. I'll shoot it over to you guys, and we'll get it rolling.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, thank you all very much. We, you know, we enjoy, enjoy coming out to the municipalities. We really do enjoy it, see, you know, different faces and hear what's, what's on people's minds, although there is a continuing theme about roads in almost all, all the municipalities. So we understand, and hopefully we'll do, hopefully we can give something about it. So thank you all very much for allowing us this opportunity to come out.
Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it.
Okay, all right. Well, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
[laughing].